Good afternoon. Welcome to the Sierra Vista City Council Work Session for October 23, 2018. We have everybody here, just for the record. And we'll go start with the October 25 council meeting agenda. And as usual, we'll have the prayer, the pledge, acceptance of the agenda. Is there any reason we may need to change the agenda?
No.
Okay. We do awards and presentations, city managers' report, and the move to the consent items. There's two consent items. The first is the approval of meeting minutes for October 11, 2018. Is there any need for addition, any corrections, additions, deletions from the minutes?
I didn't see anything.
Nobody see anything? Okay. And then 2.2 is a resolution of the acceptance of the sewer line easement for Lolly Nissan. And Matt, I'm going to ask you to just kind of briefly go through this. I think it was pretty self-evident, but there may be some questions.
The easement attached to the resolution is to convey a public easement over a sewer line that was installed as part of the Lolly Nissan Modified Site Plan Approval Permit. All public utilities traversing private property are required to convey such an easement to provide the city with the ability to access their infrastructure for any future renewal or replacement or maintenance activities. So that's the purpose of the easement, to provide public access to the public infrastructure that's on private property. In this case, it pertains to the Lolly Nissan site. And as shown, I think, on Exhibit A of the resolution...
It's in the, there's an exhibit there. Yes, ma'am.
Could you explain what the public piece is that's on the private property?
It's the sewer line.
The sewer line itself.
Okay. I thought, I thought the city was not responsible for the sewer line from the street to the property, to the building.
This is, this is not, this is not the sewer connection line from the prop, from the building to, to the, to the line. It's essentially space to put a new line in.
For Lolly to put a line in?
Well, for, well, it's a city, it's a city sewer line is what's being put on private property.
Into the property?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
It's the sewer main.
The sewer main.
Oh, okay.
They were, they're responsible for moving from their building, the sewage from their building to the main.
To the main. I got it. Okay.
We've got to have permission to put the main on their property.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
That's how this happens. Okay. Any other questions? All right. The next item is the Census Committee. Mr. McLaughlin, would you give his staff report, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this resolution affirms the city's interest...
Commitment.
...commitment in establishing participation in the countywide Complete Count Committee to ensure an accurate and complete census count in April 2020. The Complete Count Committee is a volunteer committee focused on increasing awareness about the census and motivating residents in the community to respond to the census. Staff recommends that the city join the countywide Complete Count Committee to avoid duplication of effort. Staff will identify, invite community members to participate on the committee, on the committee. We will work with Emily from the U.S. Census Bureau in developing an action plan and schedule in the upcoming months, which will provide detail to the effort. And we'll keep you informed through the executive report going forward of our progress.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Questions for Mr. McLaughlin?
Excuse me. Were you?
No, please.
I may have missed your comment as we poured the water. Is a call going out to the public to be a part of that committee, or how is that going to work?
It could be a call to the public. Generally, the membership should be the civic leaders, like pastors of churches, major business interests. So the goal is to achieve a broad cross-section of the community, ensure, you know, representation on the committee. So if there are gaps that we see on the committee, we will proactively contact individuals to hopefully get them to serve as a volunteer on the committee. But the goal is to, you know, make sure it's representative of the community and...
And really, the first step is to review the last census, if you have any data, and see if there are any areas that were, appeared to be underserved.
That's true, too.
Or underaccounted, I should say. That's probably the best, better, better word. And then identify leaders in the community to help make sure that doesn't happen again. Mr. Mount?
It's this size of the committee? How many people?
That has yet to be determined. There will be most likely a local subcommittee representing Sierra Vista, and I would expect the subcommittee probably, I would guess, 10 to 15 members.
And who ultimately decides who those 10 or 15 members are?
Well, the way we're proposing currently is staff would decide, but if the council wants to be involved in the selection, we can certainly bring those recommendations to you.
Will staff be willing to present a list of who you are recommending to council before any final decisions are made?
Sure.
I'm not really sure that's necessary, but if that's what the council's desire is, sure. I don't, you know, I don't see an issue with it.
I don't either. I just don't see it as necessary.
Okay. All right. Great. Anything else?
Thinking, thinking.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. We'll now move up. Ma'am?
When do you expect to have that formed?
I would say by February of next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll go to Item B. Mr. Petichek's going to talk to us, I think. It's you, Chuck.
Yeah.
Future recycling issues?
Sharon, do you have a, Sharon's going to start, and then I'll kick in after that.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of council, things have certainly changed in the recycling market in the last year. If I'd been having this conversation with you a year ago, recycling would have been making money and generating revenue for the county. And unfortunately, a lot has happened between now and then. The primary driver of all of this, as Marty noted when he was here a few months ago, is changing regulations in China. Basically, China got sick of being the world's dumping ground and implemented their own version of the EPA, who started tightening regulations significantly on recycling coming into their ports. And China was the major consumer of recyclables from U.S. and other Western markets. The first changes came to, I'll call them the lower dollar materials, which was the mixed paper and the mixed plastics. They started to no longer accept those items, and as a result, the price of those dropped through the floor. Now, there were some other markets in Southeast Asia that were taking those, but those markets were very quickly overwhelmed with materials, could not accept everything that was coming their way from both the U.S., Europe, other developed countries. And as a result, there was nowhere to send those materials. And although we do believe that new markets are going to emerge for recycling, that's going to take time, especially domestically. There are a lot of regulations to deal with. But even in foreign markets, it just takes time for, for those new opportunities to develop. If you'll recall, when I spoke to you a couple of months ago, number one and number two plastics had a question mark associated with them. At the time, they were still reasonably strong, but we were starting to get word of some possible additional changes coming up that were going to impact those materials. And in fact, those changes have now become reality and are creating issues with that commodity. China's scaling back on those now. Actually, in May of this year, they accepted no recyclable materials at all for the entire month. So you can imagine what happened to ports around the world with all the recyclables stacking up. But again, the principles of supply and demand, if there is a lot of the materials out there and no one's taking them, the price drops, and it drops pretty dramatically. And unfortunately, that's been coupled with rising transportation costs. So materials aren't returning much value, but they cost a lot of money to get to a processing center. I wanted to note that this is not reflective of contamination, per se. It's just the value of the materials in general. Even if they were immaculate, we would still be discussing this issue because we're in a rural location. And in my conversations with Marty Haverdy, I confirmed with him, I said, so these materials still have a value? And he said, yes, they did, and that if we were in a larger market, such as Tucson or Phoenix, we could potentially get them to a processing center, and the revenue would exceed the cost. He said, yes, the problem is where we are. The number he gave me was more than $100 per ton to get the material to a recycling center. And thus, plastics no longer have any value in rural areas because the cost to transport them exceeds the value of the revenue we get back. Let's see. So, you know, a few options as we, as we look forward. These were just some, some things I put together. You know, first, we could keep the program we have, give it a little bit more time, and see how things shake out. You know, the positive of that is we have, you know, a little bit of time. The primary negative is the precedent isn't good. A lot of other communities across the country chose to do the same thing with papers and mixed plastics, and they are now struggling with huge piles of the stuff and no market to send them to. So that's a reality that could hit. We have looked into potential of other vendors. We contacted Waste Management. The re-communities that the county used to take everything to is run by Republic, which is another major hauler, so we thought of reaching out to Waste Management. Unfortunately, they said recycling just has no value right now. Without being able to get revenues from garbage, they're not really interested in taking the recycling and dealing with the recycling. Could possibly talk about eliminating plastics and moving to a drop-off program? All of you have been in the community for a while. You'll recall that that's actually how the city used to run its recycling program. In the days before the blue bins, and even in the days before orange bags, we had drop-off centers at a few locations around the community. And the reason that's now back on the list is if we are looking at potentially eliminating plastics due to no market, the only thing that would be left in the blue bins is corrugated cardboard, aluminum, and tin. And frankly, in our opinion, that's not really enough to fill a blue bin for most people. So there is the potential of going back to drop-off sites and utilizing those again, whether it's...
And you didn't mention the cost of actually running the trucks just to pick, pick up a small amount of, of refuse, or recycling.
Correct. And then we'd have to take a look at, you know, those current recycling. You know, when we talked about the changes a couple of months ago, council chose to re-convert some of the blue bin days to green bin days. So, you know, it would be an open discussion whether the remainder go back to green bin days, or how we choose to handle that situation. And then, you know, always on the table, but maybe not quite there yet, is if the recycling markets continue to struggle and it costs more to recycle than other alternatives, the, the value of continuing the recycling program. But Sierra Vista's had a recycling program for many years now. You know, and I believe that residents still want to recycle, but clearly, we need to find a way to do that in the most economical fashion.
Chuck? So, Mr. Mayor, as you're aware, of course, a couple of months ago, we cut back the number of recycling pickup days in half. So I'll just kind of quickly go through what we, I perceive to be the options for the council to consider as we move forward. Sharon's talked about them a little bit already. First would be to continue doing what we're doing. I don't have a good, very good outlook, in my opinion, on where that's going right now, given the nature of the markets. And when I, you know, we, it's anybody's guess when they could recover. Essentially, doing what we're doing will probably end up in higher costs and rate increases for the council to look at, probably as soon as next fiscal year. So, so we can continue to do that, but you'll be subsidizing the operation more heavily than you're doing now. Second option would be to drop back to the aluminum and corrugated cardboard and reinstitute voluntary recycling. We can put roll-offs up, for instance, at the Public Works Yard and maybe other sites around town, and, and people can bring those items to those dumpsters, and then we would pick them up and either take them to the county or to market ourselves. And the third is to just drop the recycling operation altogether, go to just regular pickups twice a week. I think that one has the advantage of probably allowing us, as well as option two, to look at reducing a route, which would reduce one truck on, on the street and a driver. So option two and three could end up with reduced costs and, and help us with rates going forward. So that's kind of where I see where we're at right now. I'm leaning towards recommending option two, which is a voluntary recycling program, and then looking at dropping a route for the two regular pickups a week.
But you don't have any exact numbers yet?
Not yet, no.
Okay. Questions? Discussion?
Yeah. I, I think you answered the question, and I think it, it is, it's anybody's guess. But just to confirm the timeframe that we can reasonably, reasonably expect the market to stabilize?
Well, I think, given the markets right now, and, you know, and being anybody's guess, you know, I'm going to say it's, Council, Mayor Proton Ash, it's going to be at least a year or so before we see any movement in the market. And I, I'm just guessing. I don't have any hard numbers to back that up, but I think it's going to take a while. We went down into this quickly. I think it's going to stay bottomed for a while. At some point, markets will improve somewhere, but I don't see that happening anytime soon. So for that reason, I'd want to see people keep their blue bins for a while in hopes that the market does come back, and we can quickly reinstitute the program if indeed they do. If we don't see any relief in sight in that area, then we would probably look to, to pick up the blue bins at some point.
So there is still a market for corrugated cardboard and aluminum?
Yes.
And is that cost to move that to Tucson still about $100 a ton?
Sharon, go ahead.
Mr. Members, members of council, as Marty conveyed it to me, yes, the cost is pretty consistent across the different groups of materials. It's just that in the case of corrugated cardboard, aluminum, and tin, the price that he can get back for those materials exceeds the transportation costs.
Okay. So then, my next question is, if we use the blue bins for only, and I understand it would take a while to fill it, although mine seems to fill awfully fast, I think we eat a lot. But if we were to fill it with corrugated cardboard and tin and aluminum, and it was picked up once a month, would that be a doable possibility? Rather than using the bin, the drop-off?
Ms. Mular, Councilmember Calhoun, yes, it is a possibility, but probably wouldn't have the effect of lowering costs like the other two options would.
I see. Okay.
But it is something we can look at.
My one concern about folks who really want to recycle is their ability to get to the drop-offs. And I'm wondering, it's just something we'll just have to figure out, if, if the people who want to recycle are able to drop it off? And what we might, as citizens, not necessarily as a city, but as citizens, be able to, be able to do, to help out in that, that piece of it? So it's something we need to think about, talk about around the community.
Sure.
How many, how many different drop-off locations would we conceive to be go after?
Councilmember Out, that's a good question. We'd probably need at least, I'd say, three or four around town. If you're looking at maybe the yard, maybe Sierra Center Park area, maybe the Tompkins Park area, and one other that, you know, I haven't really identified yet.
Would that help alleviate your concerns with the drop-off, if there's locations that are closer to...
Where people are? You know, I just have to think about that, but I, you know, I think it's open still at this point to where those spots would be. And I think we'd want to hear from citizens about where they are and what they, what the desire would be. You know, it could be neighborhoods would come together on something like that and, and have some agreement among themselves on how they would get things to a drop-off point, so that would help.
If I could add to what you're saying, there, there seemed to be significant, well, as a layperson, there seemed to be significant community interest in people volunteering their time to assist with the recycling program. So it would just be nice to see how those ideas might be incorporated, whatever we do in the future.
Okay.
And the, the people who are willing to, to spend their, their own time volunteering, if it's feasible, if we could somehow, you know, work that free labor into the equation would be great.
And glass, are we still going to maintain what we do presently for glass?
Yeah, we still have the glass.
And there's still a market?
There's still a vendor market, yes.
That's fantastic. Okay. At least that is available.
Sharon, you mentioned that the larger, the larger communities have a market that's still there, and, well, I don't want to say a market. Here's my question. All right. I realize we're in a rural area. It's costing us X amount of money in fuel costs to, to ship something up and drop it off. Fuel's going up in cost. What we're dropping off isn't giving us a return on investment. But I guess my real question is, if China's the primary buyer for some of these things, who are places like Phoenix and Tucson selling to? Who's their customer base that they're actually offloading their recycling to? Irrespective of us being rural and them being urban, who's their buyer?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Mount, unfortunately, I'm, I'm not sure the answer to that question. Theirs are subject to the same market forces that we are. It's just that their cost of doing business is a little bit less than ours because they are in a bigger area with better access to major shipping points than we, we have down here.
Certainly, volume, volume would help them out in being able to market things. But the other thing is, we've always operated as a philosophy where we're going to try, at least try to break even on recycling. And I don't know if they're subsidizing recycling or not in Tucson and Phoenix either, so that's something else we'd have to look at.
What about Benson? Does Benson have a recycling program?
Not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Mayor, there, there are, you know, I think the larger cities, yes, they do have, you know, economies of scale, larger volumes, lower transportation costs, but the problem of finding markets is still there. Now, it's possible in a larger market like Phoenix that there may be, you know, companies that process, you know, that type of material, that perhaps those materials could be sold to and reused. But again, we would face the transportation costs to run them up there. I think it's an excellent question, where is the stuff going? Is it sitting on a dock somewhere in Long Beach? You know, where, where is it going? That's a really great question.
So I'll, I'll continue on with the trend of great questions, I think. So there's a couple of them here. Just some ideas. So if, if the cost, I'm kind of using math here. So if the cost is to get it from here to Tucson, wherever the next drop-off point is, has there been any discussion to potentially reach out to Benson, get it to Benson, and then have whoever come and get it from Benson? And that way, essentially, what we're doing is cutting our costs, our travel time in half, thus our fuel consumption in half, and getting it out of the city, and getting it up to somebody who could potentially be in the market for those materials?
Now, Councilmember Mount, we've actually looked at that as, as an option for our regular refuse, when we were looking at privatizing or looking at other landfilling, you know, locations, when we were going over the costs with the county rate review board. I, I think the problem there is it's still our material. If we get it to Benson, you know, you have, you have to haul it there, and then somebody still has to haul it again. So I think you're, I think in a way, we might almost be adding cost to the process by, by having a second handler involved.
Now, I'm going to shift, just very quickly, just shift direction. The next question I have, then, is if, if we go with the drop-off points around the city for the things that we can recycle, and we reduce, or we eliminate curbside recycling as it currently is, the, what would the pickup schedule look like in that regard? Because essentially, then, what we're asking people to do is simply to, are we going to go, what, every, twice a week? They just get regular garbage pickup?
Councilmember Mount, that's correct. We would go to the regular pickups like we had before with, with the green cans. We would operate and continue to operate twice a week. One of the issues with the volume of recycling going down and, and the commodities that, you know, we simply aren't able to recycle at, at a profit, is those volumes, we're sending out trucks on the same routes that we're, you know, we're doing for regular refuse pickup, and they're not picking up near the volume that, you know, the other pickup is. So we'll be able to spread that volume into the two pickups, and that's where I think we can consolidate and drop routes and save cost in the system because the trucks will be able to go further, won't have to go to the transfer station as often, and we should be able to expand other existing routes then. So that would be a cost savings measure for us by doing it that way.
And my last question, I'm sorry. My last question is from the county's perspective in the tipping fees. With us having potentially more tonnage going towards the, the landfill, we don't, do we have any projections on if they're going to try to increase the tipping fee again?
As Chair of the Rate Review Board and looking at the budget and the costs associated with the tipping fees that are currently being charged, there is enough tonnage going in at the current tipping fee, I think, to keep rates stable as far as tipping fees go for at least the next four or five years. So I think that looks pretty good right now.
Thanks.
And I think this is actually one suggestion. I was thinking the same thing when you asked about just going to once a month. If we do go to where we have just the pickup points, and we get rid of the blue bins and everything comes back, how much would it cost us to reinstate, assuming hopefully recycling can come back? I feel like we've put so much time and effort to teaching people how to recycle. I hate to just kind of give up on the program. I finally got my husband trained to do it. I don't know if that's the right word, but he finally did it after years, and now I'm like, whoop, just kidding.
Okay. Well, Councilmember Wolf, it's, it's kind of painful to come here, you know, in a, in a public setting like this and tell you this kind of news, because we have put a tremendous amount of effort into recycling, and we've had a very, very successful program through the years. So, so it's a tough thing to, to talk about, but I don't think the cost of reinstituting a program, if the markets come back, would be that, that much at all. I think we can store the blue bins, and we can get them out very quickly if we need to.
So...
I have one more question. And regardless of what happens to the recycling program, by state law, we have to pick up twice a week. Is that correct?
As asked, I believe that's correct.
So, Mr. Petichek, next steps. Do we need to, do we need to have further council discussion, or are you going to come back with, to us with suggestions, or how do we proceed?
Well, Mayor...
And how do we, and how do we let the public know what's going on? That's the other issue.
Well, there, yeah, there's two things. First, I'm going to ask Sharon and her staff to just analyze the costs associated with the options that we laid out for you here today, so we have an idea, you know, you know, if we can achieve some cost savings by going to another option. Identify drop-off sites, if that's the direction that the council cares to go back for, go to for voluntary recycling. And then, obviously, have a public education plan in place. So we would need another work session, probably, I'd say, in another month or so.
Okay. Because that was the next question, is when?
To... To, uh, give you that information then.
Okay.
So we'll do it at one of these things.
Counsel, uh, we'll now move on to item number C. We have a presentation today, uh, by Mr. Chris Clausen and by Mr. Stephen Gilman on, uh, meet and confer. Gentlemen.
And city council, city staff, uh, thank you for allowing me to give this presentation. My name's Chris Clayson. I've been a firefighter here for seven years. I've been, I'm a third-term president for the professional firefighters of Sierra Vista. And, uh, as the president of our, uh, Sierra Vista firefighters, I thought to myself how we were, I wanted to get more involved in the city and be able to give some more information to all of you on how we do our jobs, how, what we do and why we do what we do. So I thought about it as being a representative of 45 fire suppression people. And so I need to get involved in employee council. That's, I think, my first step. And so I got on employee council and the, after that, well, I shouldn't, let me back up. Before that, as a representative of 45 people or 40 people, I'm sorry, uh, I went to Chief York and I asked, "Chief, can we have monthly meetings to talk about what's happening in the fire department?" And Chief York informed me that we couldn't have scheduled monthly meetings. He was advised by the city manager that it was, didn't want it to happen. So, okay. Um, so I got involved in, uh, employee council. I'm just giving you kind of a few tidbits of why we're at, where we're at right now with this meet and confer, meet and confer presentation, which really means meeting and conferencing. And so I got on employee council. I've been on the employee council now for, I believe, three years or four years, whatever it may be. And, uh, the class comp study came up. And I said, I have a ton of information I can get, give to our human resources group when they're doing the class comp study on all kinds of things and they turned me down. So I thought to myself, what's the next best thing that we can do? What's kind of the norm throughout the state? Uh, what other departments, fire departments, fire districts do? And, uh, the meet and confer thing came up. So I said, well, let's, let's try that avenue and see where we can go in reaching out to city council and be able to give more information to you, to all of you, be in part, be involved in this information gathering, communication. So that led me, kind of led us to here today, right now. And what I've, what I have, I'm, I'm not the meet and confer expert by any stretch of the term. I'm learning to as we go along. Uh, I do have some people here that are very versed in what it is, what it doesn't do, the ins and outs of it. First, I have, uh, Steve Gilman. He's our representative of professional firefighters of Arizona. And I've also asked, uh, Fire Chief Mark Savage from Fry Fire District and Dennis Farrell, their president down there, their firefighter association. In case you all have any questions on what they do at that higher administrative level, uh, how it's working for them or it isn't working for them or what the ins and outs are. So that's kind of why we're here today, where we're at. So, um, without, I guess, further ado, I'll, Steve will come up and give his presentation on the meet and confer, what it is. You know, and you can ask all the questions you'd like. I'll come back up. Chief Savage or, uh, Mr. Farrell can come up and out, see what they do. And, uh, we'll go from there. Any questions so far?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity, Mr. City Manager. Uh, this is probably one of my favorite parts of the job, being able to travel and talk about meet and confer. There are a lot of misconceptions out there about what the process actually is, whether, whether or not it costs a lot of money. So this is kind of our opportunity to hopefully, uh, lay out a little bit of information, uh, for, for your council. It'll be a quick and painless presentation, I promise. We'll go into some of the history of how this developed, why people are using it, uh, and how it works here in a right-to-work state. We're very different than a collective bargaining state on what we can and can't do here. And even some of the recent Supreme Court decisions on, on forcing people to belong to a union that aren't really applicable here, but that also kind of plays a part. So basically what meet and confer is, it's an effective labor management process. It is actually started here in Arizona, uh, back in the seventies and we'll get into this and some of the history, when there were a lot of contentious working, uh, environments, uh, in the city. And basically the main tenets of this process are communication, accountability and government transparency, which I think are important in every form of government. As long as everybody's being transparent and everybody's communicating, I think that's a good thing. So back in the sixties and seventies, city of, uh, Phoenix, city of Tucson, several school districts were experiencing that labor management strife. It was very contentious. Uh, parties were looking for solutions, but being that we're a right-to-work state, they could not do what we effectively know as collective bargaining. So they got together and started a completely different process that we call meet and confer. And that's why we're saying it's homegrown here in the state of Arizona. So traditional bargaining, what most people think of as labor management relationships, that collective bargaining, very different than meet and confer. It's an adversarial style, both sides of the table. If anybody here has any experience of dealing with politics back east, it gets very ugly very quickly. There's demands and proposals, counter-proposals going back and forth across the table. Just not a very healthy environment that we like to see. The end result of that product is usually a binding contract, something that we're going to talk about here in, in a minute that's completely different. The weapons that those, those sides use in both labor and management are either strikes, which we're prohibited to do by law here in the state of Arizona, and lockouts where management basically keeps another group out. Again, not effective for, for the state of Arizona being right to work. More importantly, not effective for public safety. Right? We never want to see anybody do strikes or lockout. So basically this is collective bargaining right here. Let's hack out an agreement, right? Two sides just going to battle, uh, going for what they consider is their own interest versus a, a common goal. So what makes meet and confer different? Again, it's an interest-based negotiation style. And we're going to get into it in the end where there's actual free training from the federal government that teaches people how to do interest-based negotiations. Uh, the end result is the MOU, memorandum of understanding, something that's completely, uh, different. And the most important part of this whole process, the MOUs are governed by you, the elected officials. They aren't, they aren't governed by the city manager. They're not governed by the, uh, firefighters association. The ultimate decider is you, the city council, elected by the voters. So the way it works is each year employees group, the employee groups meet with the management, work together on a different range of issues. Now, they can meet once a year. They can meet once every two years, depending on whether or not that MOU states how they're, how often they're meeting. They can form, uh, different subcommittees and basically just start learning to communicate. Firefighters have vast resources and collaborative ideas for a variety of solutions that have enhanced many cities, towns and governments. Basically, these guys, your firefighters, quite often know what they need to do their job on a daily basis. Who better to ask what they need than the people on the ground? Your boots on the ground should have some input on what affects them, quite frankly, affects the potential loss of life than your firefighters. So employees are not organized in a group or prevented from meeting in an open door policy with your chief. That doesn't prevent anything. If he chooses to have that open door policy, he can continue to do that. So all parties are expected to work together in good faith, meaning there's no backdoor deals cut. There's no malicious intent. Nobody's trying to come and negotiate in bad faith with false information. In the rare events, excuse me, in the rare event of an impasse, so basically your firefighters cannot seem to negotiate or agree with city management, then it goes to a non-binding mediation. It doesn't go to arbitration. It's not binding. And again, ultimately, the city council has the final decision, period. Nobody else. So again, the voters have the power by electing you to give you the final decision on any kind of mediation that can't, that can't be resolved. I only know of two cases, I should say one case, one potential case that's going to mediation. I believe the city of Peoria, uh, roughly 10 years ago, went to mediation. There's potential talk of mediation right now in another valley city. But other than that, of all the meet and confers, even the ones that I've been involved in over the last six years, I have not heard of anybody else going to mediation. So without meet and confer, your firefighters' only recourse is protected under an Arizona revised statute 231411 that basically means that they can go in, and we can read it right here, and they have the right to meet with city council. What no chief wants, what no, what no firefighter association wants is to be blindsided. So rather than coming directly to you and skipping the fire chief and city manager, this communications platform allows them to try to work on things together and then present a joint resolution for you guys to decide on. It's not subversing and going straight around, like I said, the city manager, the fire chief. Again, you, the city council, the elected officials would have the final decision power. They have this ability now. They have the ability to come meet with you. It's not a chain of command violation. It is protected by Arizona revised statute. What they're asking for is to have a seat at the table and be able to work with city management prior to coming to you. So again, it's an interest-based approach, collaborative style, partnership style. We learn, again, interest-based negotiations. Find that common goal and strive for mutual understanding and common respect and educate both sides on labor management. You're going to focus on goals and concerns that are common to people, or common to both parties. I guarantee you, your fire chief has a concern for his people's safety. The president of your firefighters' association has a concern for his people's safety. Your fire chief wants what's best for his, his firefighters within constraints. If he can afford to pay them based on city budget, he would rather do that. Your firefighters' association president wants the same thing. So there's a lot of common goals that these, these folks have that they could work together for to achieve. They're going to give a list of, uh, ex, uh, an explanation of their needs. Again, discussion always revolves around, uh, what is beneficial to both parties. So some things that we need to clarify that are some real common misconceptions. Again, we're a right-to-work state. State law, uh, of Taft Hartley says you are not required to join a union. So these guys cannot force anybody to join a union. As a right-to-work state, anything that is negotiated by the firefighters' association, every member of the fire department will still get that protection, whether it's a pay increase, if that's what is negotiated on and agreed on. If it's a discipline process or grievance process, even the members that do not pay dues will still be represented by the association or have the same rights as that association. We cannot exclude them, nor would we want to. So again, we cannot force anybody to enter into an agreement, which would prohibit somebody from either joining or forcing them to join a union. So history of positive results here. We had jobs saved in Phoenix and Mesa. Fire and police involvement and city revenue protection, meaning sometimes when you start asking firefighters on ways to save money, they're going to come up with great ways to save money. Significant employee, uh, savings for 457 plans. 457 plans are deferred contribution plans, 401K-style plan. Social security savings. I'm not sure many of you guys might not know, uh, firefighters here in the city of Sierra Vista do not collect social security. So you get a savings right off the bat of 6.62%. Positive solutions, uh, for some of the, uh, agreements, retirements agreements. And more importantly, uh, an offshoot of this, as you start allowing people to sit down and become involved in processes, whether it's equipment, safety, you're grooming future leadership. You're succession planning by teaching these people how to run a meeting, how to write a memo, how to do research and allowing them to kind of grow from a leadership standpoint.
Before you go on, could you go, could you go back one, one slide? I want to know what the acronym G A S B slash O P E B means.
I don't want to give you the wrong acronym. Can I get it back to you? I've got it stuck in my head.
You got it on the slide, so I thought, thought you'd have the answer.
Yeah, unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, I do not have it right offhand and I will get that back to you today. I'll have it afforded through President Clausen. So here's some of the cities that use meet and confer, fire districts. The smallest, the smallest, uh, association I know that uses meet and confer is a small fire district outside of Prescott of four members, Groom Creek. And then there's obviously the city of Mesa, the city of Phoenix, Peoria. The majority of our, uh, fire departments in the valley, save for Gilbert and Scottsdale, use a meet and confer process. So what do government officials have to say? As President Clausen was saying, you have one of the fire departments right next door that started using this recently. Very positive results. Uh, helped, helped balance the budget, helped reduce pay comprehension for firefighters. I mean, these are just some of the things. And he's here. I'd rather have him answer if you have direct questions for him. This is a very positive process that can benefit not just your firefighters, but it can benefit your voters, your city by learning different ways to save money, by learning different ways to increase safety, by learning different ways to buy equipment that's better suited for your department or the guys that are actually using it on a daily basis. Another one, uh, again, and this is probably one of the ones that I think is most, most beneficial to your firefighters. And it's the last quote here, "The byproducts of all this higher morale from a workforce that is part of the solution with an active voice in making the department successful." So this is a, is a process that does not cost you money, but gives your firefighters a huge increase in morale and gives them a voice and a seat at the table on things that directly affect them, things such as policies. Let them help write policies. If the, the more front-end work you can do, the less back-end work you would do when policies are given down or equipment is bought and purchased, that if they would have had a say in it, you're going to have a much better end result and product. So going back to some of the training that is afforded to you guys, should you choose down this path, federal mediation and conciliation services provides interest-based communications and labor management relations training, no cost. They come in and teach both sides, management and, and labor, how to negotiate, how to come up with a common goal and how to achieve that goal. So free training makes it for a much better, better process and a much better and smooth-run department. So just a quick summary, uh, does not abdicate any decision-making. And this is what I always try to stress, the ultimate voice, the ultimate end decision is the elected officials. Meet and confer provides increased transparency, employment, employee relationships in government, meaning as you're writing a process or, or starting a policy, if they're involved, if you have buy-in from your employees as you're starting to work down through this system, that's perfect transparency. We cannot strike. There can be no job actions that are strictly forbidden. Nobody is forced to join a union. It's a huge positive, uh, track record of proven results. And training and preparation is provided at no cost to the organization. So with that, any questions?
Counsel, any questions for the presenters?
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel, yes.
Thank you and thank you for your presentation. A couple of comments. But my first one is, what prevents the process you're describing where, um, boots-on-the-ground don't have, uh, a say in what happens in, let's say, final, final decisions about whatever the topic, whatever it is?
As far as your process here in the city?
What we do now, yes. So let me, let me, so what I would imagine is the firemen would go to, through their chain of command. Now, and, and who would listen to what they have to say? And then that would go to, uh, city manager. And discussions would be held and decisions would be made. And then that would come to council for finali- finalizing those decisions. What keeps that from happening now?
If I may defer to President Clausen, do you have a better, he's got a better understanding of your process now, but if, from just based on the brief moment that he said that there is no regularly scheduled meeting with your chief, that there is no, uh, process for them to bring anything forward right now, is my understanding.
No, no formal process.
No formal process. Um, and the one, uh, process that I do believe you have, the employee board, maybe once a year. But to be actively involved in decision-making throughout the year by forming committees, and again, affecting the guys that are essentially your boots on- and again, affecting the guys that are essentially your boots-on-the-ground, your firefighters, I think to formalize a process is huge.
How often does the committee, the?
Employee.
Meet?
I have monthly meetings right now.
Monthly meetings, okay.
Thank you. Somebody else, and then I'll come back later.
Questions for the presenters? What's that?
Is Klaassen going to add anything?
Oh.
Were you going to add anything, Mr. Klaassen?
I have nothing else to add.
Okay.
Unless you have questions for me.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I guess just a couple of questions, maybe just some thoughts. So while the acronym discussion came up, I just did a quick Google search. Just to answer your question.
Yeah, I got it. She shared it with me.
Oh, good. All right. Well, just for the record, then, it's Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and then the other one is Other Post-Employment Benefits, just for the record. I guess, you know, without picking sides on any of this, and obviously, it's a bit of a discussion of going on and it deals with, let me take these glasses off. I got these glasses yesterday. I said I had to get glasses because I couldn't drive, I guess, without them. So now everything just gets worse when I take them off. That's all right. So I guess the thing with me, what's interesting about this discussion is the idea that there's the perspective maybe of just miscommunication or a lack of information coming up, or maybe a lack of information getting to council for us to make decisions on. I don't want to speculate on to what's really there. I am very curious, though, as to specifically about the idea of quote-unquote "boots-on-the-ground." That is something, and I'll just kind of touch back onto my time, as a young soldier in the military, I never operated anything higher than at the battalion level, meaning at the lowest level, kind of where, the analogy being where a firefighter would be on a truck or actually out fighting a fire. And I know that when we went to war in Iraq and Afghanistan, the military was ill-equipped to face that. And what they did was they did not rely on the people who were sitting back at the Pentagon or the people sitting up in Washington, D.C. to determine what the needs were in order for the operations to take place. They stood up whole programs such as JUONs and ONs, which are Joint Urgent Need Statements, urgent need statements. And what that meant was, they went out to the soldiers, the Marines, the sailors, the airmen who were fighting on the ground, and said, "What do you need in order to, one, to survive, and two, to accomplish the mission that we sent you out to do?" And it was this complete massive change in the culture and the philosophy of how we conducted acquisition to get the supplies and the resources and the materials needed to the people who are actually using them, because they were the ones who were the best equipped to say, "This is what I need in order to do my job and to survive and to come home," et cetera, et cetera. Now, I don't know what the right answer is. I do think that if we have discussions taking place that pertain to what are the equipments needed by the people, whether it's our police officers or our firefighters, and if they feel that they need to have a stronger voice in what they need in order to effectively and efficiently go out and accomplish their mission, to be successful in that mission, and then to come home and be safe, and then ultimately be safe for the rest of their life, because we know that they're dealing with a bunch of dangerous stuff, that those are things that I think we may be open to, at least I'd be open to, is how do we really know what they need? And I do believe that a lot of times, it is the people who are on the ground doing the work who know what they need better than anybody else, especially those of us who are up here on this dais. So for, at least for that reason to start off with, I am curious as to what are the steps that we need to do to solve the common problem to make sure that we, as the elected representatives who are voting on the budget, fully understand what we're asking these young men and women, and sometimes some of y'all are old, some of y'all old men and women as well, to go out there and do this job so that we properly resource them so that we know that they're doing it as best they can. And I don't want to go too far beyond that, but that's the feedback that I hear quite a bit. So I'll just leave it at that for right now, Mayor. I guess anybody's going to chime in.
Again, that's, those are good discussion points for the council. Are there any other questions specifically for the presenters? I don't want to have them standing up here until the cows come home. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for Chief Savage. I see that you have your statement here and that it's worked out really well for you. Before this was put in place, did you have any concerns before you went and did that? And were those concerns ultimately either alleviated or addressed? Were you a little hesitant?
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, short answer is yes. We had somewhat of a strained relationship between our prior admin and our personnel. I think you asked about some of those issues. One of them included an unsustainable budget. That was built around 87% of that is spent on our personnel. One of the things that we worked through is adopting a new pay scale. We couldn't have done that without the input and buy-in from our employees. That would have been a uphill battle all the way. I think a couple of people talked about transparency and collaboration, and I would say that those two things are key. We included labor in the conversation upfront when we started discussing this year's budget, last year's budget, with our accountants, and we all came to the table together. We realized that we're working with finite resources, and we wanted to figure out how to best share those resources among the competing demands so that our customers get the best service they can.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or questions for our speakers?
I did. You mentioned positive results that history has shown in the meet-and-confer process. Do you care to comment about any negative, if they exist, results from having a meet-and-confer process?
Negative, I can't tell you or can't even think of one overall negative aspect of the process. Do sometimes it take, does it sometimes take a little bit longer to negotiate through some terms? Absolutely. We saw that during the economic downturn. But as Chief Savage alluded to, part of those positive results that came out of it were we're going to have to furlough firefighters in some cities. Rather than lower to a level of service which would put three people on a truck, groups in certain cities, larger cities, were able to work together to figure out the best way to keep the level of service high while reducing that budget. So from a negative aspect, like I said, I've heard of two or one going to mediation and one almost going to mediation or might be going to. But from an overall negative aspect, complete negative aspect, Councilwoman, I cannot think of one. Okay, yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions, actually. Thank you both. Could you kind of spur some thoughts here? Do you have, or does somebody have data that they can show that would quantifiably, to some of the things that were pointed out in your slides, you know? And I agree with what Chief said just a minute ago as well. Can you, can we draw a parallel line that shows a level of service increase effectiveness or efficiency on a quantifiable level from a department that went from, say, not having a meet-and-confer system to a meet-and-confer system? And the things that I'm interested in are problems that we talk about quite a bit. So recruiting, retention. The other thing I'm looking at is, what was it, response times, response rates, and that could be brought back to maybe efficiencies brought up by the force for how to potentially do this. Scheduling, I know that's something that I've heard before, how that all works. And really also, I'm interested in is the results. And if there's a way, I'm a data guy. Yeah, if there's a piece of data that shows that, and in good faith, as we talked about, something that is, you know, here's a couple of use cases where it may have worked. If it didn't work, we'd like to see that as well, but just something.
Okay.
So we're not having to make assumptions and guesses about the potential results of this if it were to move forward at all.
I'll try to get you that information through President Klaassen, Councilman, as soon as I can.
Thank you.
Could you go backwards through your slides again? There was one slide, I think I, I thought I'd written down the name of it so you could find it. That one. Yeah, I guess that's it. That's some things that I, when you mentioned jobs saved, is that what you were just talking about?
Yeah, some of them were, happened to be all the way back from the '70s during the teacher strife. Some of them happened to be talking about furloughing to keep the level of service. And those are some examples that Councilman Mount brought up that I can get to you with the specific examples of what transpired.
Could you say more about social security savings?
Yes, most departments, most firefighters, not all of them, mind you, have chosen to opt out of social security, which again, saves the city directly 6.625%. So for your city, I'm assuming it'd be tens of thousands of dollars a year that they're saving.
And that's balanced against our PSPRS contributions.
Right.
Correct. But, Mr. Mayor, if I may say so, also, some of the departments still get social security that receive PSPRS. These ones receive PSPRS and no social security.
I'm talking about our guys.
ASRS receives social security and an ARS amount. So there is some quantitative savings there. And the other thing, Council, like you said, what prevents you? The best thing about this process is you, the city, can choose to tailor it any way you see fit. So if you're saying, "What's the process currently in place?", if you choose to go down a different path or formalize it, there is no set standard of how you have to pursue this. It can be tailored to specifically the way the city of Sierra Vista sees fit.
So then we would be making rules, policy, that would set up how our employees work with our management?
Through the labor management process? Yes, that would be your overall goal is to say, "Here's what we think a labor management process should look like," and then develop it from there.
I'm still, of course, I know we don't have to make any decisions at this point in time, but I'm still struggling with why it can't work without going through a meet-and-confer process. Why all the grownups in the room can't sit together and have these conversations? And I'm having an issue with, grownups don't do that. I'm having an issue with that the firemen and women can't sit down with their leadership and bring this process full circle to what they want and need as firemen and women isn't coming forward. Why it's not there? What's the problem? So, and that may not be for you to answer.
That's a future discussion that we obviously need to touch on.
Well, yeah, not, yeah, we really need to have the conversation because, you know, I hear so much about rules and regulations, and why do we need more? Why do we need more? And, you know, I've had this conversation a bit, and I understand personalities get involved, but I, everything that you've brought up, I don't see why there isn't an answer for it. And one in particular is the employee council. Why that isn't working to the benefit of all of the employees? That's what it's supposed to do. And so those are some things we'll have to continue having conversations about and work through and work with. I don't understand, I do to some degree, but why people feel, employees feel they have to almost tiptoe around in order to be heard? And that we want to make, make a major issue of conversation. And I think everybody understands why that's a major issue. It's not just for fire, but for all of our employees. They should feel that this is an open book, that we're all working on the same team for the same end result. And as you've mentioned, and I know, I think, Chris, you may have said, that we all want what's best for the employees. And how we get there has a lot to do with the decisions that we make up here, but it also has to do with everybody playing fair. So before I say yes, we need to do this, I would like to hear everybody's views on what we can do to make this happen right now. I like to believe I can hear an honest, open statement from whoever I talk to on the staff, and I don't understand how come that's not true.
Well, that's not, that's not a question for these guys to answer.
Well, that's true.
That's something for us to discuss, and I want to thank you guys for your presentation today. You got one quick point?
Councilman Eddie Calhoun, thank you. I think the question has, when I started, I said I went to Chief York to ask for a monthly meeting. And he went through his chain of command and asked if that was a possibility. He came back to me and said it was not. So I think the question is right there. Why isn't that allowed? As me being the president or representative of our firefighters, why is that not allowed? Because I have no problem walking in the Chief York's office and talking to him. We have a really good relationship. We might see different things, different ways, but we respect each other. There's no doubt about that. So I think that's where the question is, is why? Is it because of the title I have? I'm not sure. I don't know why. But I wasn't allowed to do that as the president, as representing 45 firefighters. I couldn't do that. So I think the question is there, because I want that to happen. So that's my view on that.
That and the employee council is another place.
Well, we need to figure out why the employee council isn't working the way it was designed to do, and so that's another discussion we need to have as well. So I want to thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you being here today. And obviously, this is going to be points of discussion in the future.
Mayor, this is, excuse me, this is not a personnel issue, right? So it's open for conversation at any time?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
The other thing, thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Any further discussion on council?
I have some questions, not for these guys.
Do you have some questions?
I think he had.
Did you have a closing statement?
I didn't have, not a closing statement. Like I said, I've been on the employee council now for three years, and I've seen so many of our members in the fire department sit on the employee council, and I hear the same remark over and over and over and over, that it doesn't work.
The employee council is not working.
Well, that's why we need to look at to fix it, Mr. Klaassen.
And we meet, now it's, the rules are changing, and I'm not sure if you're aware, the personnel rules and regs are changing.
Yes, we are.
To the, the employee council is now only going to be meeting every three months. It was monthly, now it's three months.
Well, there's more changes than just that, is my understanding.
There's quite a few changes, yes.
And that's something that we need to be advised of by management as well. Okay? Thank you, gentlemen.
If I may, just, I'm sorry, one more point, Councilwoman Calhoun, to your, to your topic of why is it not working? And in my experience, this is what we've seen before, as Chief Savage talked about, his prior administration, they did not have a good relationship. Currently, right now, the president and the chief do have a mutually beneficial relationship of respect. What this does is codify a process so that if a new chief comes in or if new council comes in, and there isn't that strong relationship, they at least have a platform in which their firefighters can still voice their concerns. And it still allows them to have a seat at the table. And again, the boots-on-the-ground are kind of giving a little bit of feedback of what they think needs to be done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Further discussion from the council? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Thank you both for your presentation and comments. I just, I guess I have a few observations and just things I was writing down. My first question, though, is for Mr. Petuchek. Can you walk me through the process that employees currently have with grievances that they, that might come up? What does that process look like now?
Well, Mayor Mueller, Councilmember Gray, we have a grievance process. It's established in the personnel rules and regulations. So essentially, you know, the employee and their supervisor, you know, first try to work it out. So it pretty much goes through the chain then to the department head, and then if there isn't a resolution, then HR will get involved and investigate, and then ultimately, I make the final decision, depending on what the findings are.
Okay. And it's my understanding that those employees are also allowed to have representation of whomever within the hearings and things like that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. So I was just thinking through, and I'm not going to be formal here. Chris and I have had many discussions about this. And one of the things we talked about, and Chris just reminded me, was it Goodyear or Gilbert we talked about recently that has a, come on, yeah, you can answer me, please. It was Goodyear or Gilbert that has a solution? It was Goodyear Gilbert that has a, a, a solution outside of meet and confer that we had recently discussed, and I can't remember what.
I think it might be Gilbert. I've still got to find information on it.
Okay.
You know, we, I'm still working on getting that information on how they do, what they do there. That was, might have been, Steve might know better, but that was one of the departments up in the valley that doesn't do a meet and confer style, uh, you know, committee thing.
Yep.
So I'll, I'll still have to get that information.
Okay.
And how they do it. I'm not, and I'm not a hundred percent, a hundred percent sure that they do that.
Okay.
That's just through conversation I've heard here and there.
So they do a very similar, thank you, Chris, they do a very similar thing where, um, I was just trying to think through ways, as we've talked about this, and, and trying to get, um, both sides of this issue to come together for the common good and the common goal of how would this look? Um, and, and looking and, and hearing opinions that I wasn't sure meet and confer was going to be feasible in Sierra Vista, so how could we make it work? One of the things that we, what we talked about and that I thought about was possibly, and I'm just putting this out not for discussion right now, but just for thought for future discussion, is that each department, that's fire, police, public works, administration, you know, all of our different, leisure and library, Lord, don't let me forget Laura, just say, hey! Um, that all of those different departments kind of have their individual employee councils that, that representatives that come together and talk about the issues. Where I think the disconnect is, and what we as a council really need to look at fixing is it's getting from those boots-on-the-ground employees, for lack of a better term, to us as council members, if that be through, you know, in the budget process, or when we're looking at policies, even looking at the new policy regs and regulations that are coming out. So how do we fix that? I think that's something to think about there, is before we approve the new rules and regulations, let's make sure that there's a viable solution in there that offers a, a way for us to hear the things that are going on. Um, and I know that's, that seems to be the kind of, the disconnect, I believe. So I just, food for thought, I think that we definitely need to refine it. Um, and I think the process for employees with grievances is there. Um, I know that relationships between, um, the fire department with Chris and, um, uh, Chief York have really improved, and I commend Chief York for opening his door and allowing that. So I appreciate, something we talked about, I think for a couple of hours here in these chambers when he first started. So I do appreciate that, and, and I wanted them, and Christine and I had discussed this too, both of us, we wanted this to get in front of council, not because there's an opposition or, um, or because we want it to happen, but because we felt like it was important that council all get the same information. Um, you know, instead of talking one by one, because we're all hearing, in essence, the same thing. Chris is very consistent in his comments when he talks with us, but I wanted us all to hear, and I think Christine agrees with us, just hearing the same thing so that we can make an informed decision about how best to improve communication between council and staff. So that's, those are my comments.
Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I guess I, other than the information briefing, maybe I'm just confused as to what the intent is of, of, of what we're doing today. So we've, uh, I think we've heard all the sides of this. I'm not saying we have to necessarily make a decision on something, but I do think that, uh, I'll speak for myself. I, I think that there's, uh, something going on that we need to, to your point, is figure out exactly what that is. Uh, I'd like to know when we are going to address this again specifically? Um, how much more investigation is required? What do we think that investigation, uh, the scope of it consists of? Um, what are the facts that we're looking for in order to make a decision? What are the questions that are still outstanding? And I, I don't know if that necessarily requires another work session just to gen all that stuff up. Uh, do we want to get all of our questions together and get those filtered up to somebody so we can get all those things answered, so that the next time we meet, we actually can make a decision and do something, uh, other than, uh, than another work session? I'm just kind of tossing it out, cause I, just curious.
And, and I'll just answer, Craig, for me today, as, as just stated, is we've, we've now heard from, um, experts that defend, you know, meet and confer and that sort of, in the executive session where we talked about that. And today we've heard about proponents of meet and confer. I didn't feel like that coming today, we would be able to make a decision. I think that's way too much information for us to process in a short period of time to make that decision. But I do, however, feel it very important that council, before we approve this new employee rules and regulations, that we come to some sort of answer of how we want to go forward with a policy, which is our job policy, is a policy that, um, facilitates communication between employees, management, and then ultimately council.
One of, one of the things I think is critically important is we need to be able to review, uh, the new, uh, personnel rules and regulations that is coming out. Uh, we need to have a discussion on that. At the same time, I think it would be appropriate to discuss some of the items that you, you talked about, Craig, as to whether, whether this is the way to go, or whether, whether we need to enhance, uh, the personnel rules and regulations to ma, to make sure we have open communication. I don't think anybody disagrees that we want to have communication of needs up and down the chain and priorit, prioritization eventually by us as to where we spend the, spend the money. But again, I think we need to get a, get a good view of the personal rules and regulations changes, how the employee council works, if there are things we can do to make it work more effectively, uh, and, uh, or maybe, maybe scrap it and do something else.
And some possible solutions.
Possible solutions.
Well, yeah, and I'll, and I'll, I'll be very clear about my, about my stance here. I don't think that what we're hearing, for at least what I heard, is not a discussion about employee conduct or rules and regulations. I, I know that's kind of getting, I, I don't, I don't think that's an issue. I mean, we, we just heard everybody say they're all mutually respecting each other, and that, that's not an issue. Uh, what, what I am more concerned about, and this will go back towards the budget piece, and I won't go into the specifics, but, um, are the requirements being met so that operations can be conducted more efficiently, more safely, uh, with a longer-term benefit and better service to the public? Um, that right there, I don't think requires a review of, of personal regulations in terms of conduct or whatnot. I am very concerned with the idea that we have anybody who is trying their best, uh, with all good faith to improve the organization in which they're a part of, to include us, um, to try to solve problems, and if they're getting shut down at the point of discussion because they're not somewhere within the, the pecking order on the totem pole or whatever else, um, that is something that, that I have had personal experience with in my lane. Uh, I don't like it. Uh, so maybe I'm a little biased there, but, but I think that we should all be moving towards some level of improvement, and that is irregardless of the current standard or ideas that are on the table right now. It should be what are all the new things that we can do in order to make it better, simply put? Now, I don't know if meet and confer is going to be the right way to go about it. I, I don't, I don't, I don't want to get married to an idea.
Right.
But if I've got a young firefighter coming up saying, hey, if I've got this, I can do my job 20% more effectively, I want to hear that without there, any, any sort of filter in between our discussion at the budget time, can we go out and buy these widgets or gadgets or, or trucks, or breathing devices, or whatever it is? Um, that's the part that I'm more concerned with. Uh, and if it requires meet and confer to get us there, I, that's fine too. But if it's, if there's some way to fix it at the point, I think that's what I'm hearing more than anything else.
The other, the other things that I stress with people, employees in particular, when I talk to them, is I understand they don't want to jump the chain of command, but they need to understand that in my case, and I think in case of most of the council members, if you have an issue and you don't feel you're being heard, you can in fact trust us to be able to work on that issue with you without causing undue harm or, or, uh, kickback from the, from the higher-ups. And, uh, uh, well, I, I have a recent example, but I won't share it. Uh, but bottom line is, anybody in the organization should be able to come and talk to us. We work for you, and that's, and that, that's the thing we need to, uh, make endemic in the entire organization. And how we do that is what we need to, what we need to discuss.
And just also want to add is, is today, meet and confer was just discussing fire, and I'm more, I'm interested in obviously improving that process, but also looking at the process for the whole city, and how do we improve that as a whole? Um, I am, will just go on the record now, and Chris and I, I've said this to him as well, I am not in favor of having 10 different meet and confer, um, resolutions for different departments. I would rather find something that works for everyone.
Uh, I, well, I'm sorry, just, just since we're, we're, I, I appreciate you at least putting that out there. I, I, I'll say this, I, and, and maybe this will, I don't know, I, maybe people will look down on this statement, but I, I do think that we have to, um, I, I like the idea that everybody in this city has a, has a value, they all do good work. Um, there is something with our, our, our fire and our police, uh, and to some extent with public works, with the, the equipment that they use, where if there's a, literally some of their lives are on the line when they're going out, and, and that is the stuff that I want to make sure that it is tight and they have all the, the up and down. And so that's why I'm saying it, maybe not everybody needs meet and confer, but at this point, I just want to make sure that all the options are on the table to make sure that we accomplish that common goal, and that there is a bit of a priority, uh, when it comes to, when you have somebody whose life is on the line versus somebody who's not, we're able to hear that message kind of coming through. Uh, because there has to be a priority in terms of what we do, and unfortunately, that means that we can't just say all things are equal if there's a priority.
I don't think anyone's saying all things are equal. I'm saying I'm trying to find a process. Our job is policy and process, and that's what I'm trying to find and for us to discuss is how does that work? Um, and by no means saying that one department is more important than another. Um, they do different things, and they have different needs, they have different priorities. And I, for one, as a council member who has to make decisions on the budget, I want to know of each of those, what those needs are. And in some cases, it's going to be safety, and, and the case of public works, fire department have a really hard time if garbage isn't picked up getting down the streets. All of, everything's important. It's all important, and I just, but the needs are different, and I think that's the differential, is that the needs are different, but there is a policy and there is a process, and we need to determine as a group what that is. I don't know if meet and confer is the answer or not, or if it's something different. I just think it's important we have the discussion.
Right. I totally agree with that, and so, uh, when is the employee manual going to be available to us?
I believe it's scheduled for the next, next work session, yeah, so.
So it's going to be presented, like, will we get it before the presentation?
You will.
Okay.
And I think the key, key thing is to make sure that it's, it's enhanced and clear so that employees know how to, how to bring up issues, whether it's a grievance or whether it's a actual operational need. And that, I think, I think that's critical.
Well, it is, but I don't want to overshadow the primary reason we're here today over this, this whole, the processes that are happening and are not happening, and that we, we have to be sure we're doing what I think Rachel implied or said. And if we're not going to go strictly meet and confer, and we haven't decided that yet, what are we, what are we, what's our goal going to be in the conversation around the employee manual?
Well, the first step, I think, is explore options. These guys laid out an option for us today. We, we need to look at the employee ma, uh, manual or the, the pause, rules and regulations. We see, see if that is, that meets the need or it's wanting, and make corrections if possible. And we may be talking about this another six months if it doesn't work out. I mean, I mean.
But Ms.
We'll see if we can't move that a little faster.
We're talking, we're talking, discussing this next, basically have another discussion in, what, two, three weeks? What does, what does next make, three weeks?
December?
So maybe, maybe that's where my confusion is then, Maris, cause I, we, we just said, uh, that it's okay for an employee to bring their concerns up to the council, right? And now we're talking about having to go back and review an employee rulebook for what? To see if that jives up to what we said?
To make sure that it jives with what we just said, that they can come to us, or it, it is a, there's a process in there that clearly says that if you have an issue, talk to your supervisor, you talk to your, your, his supervisor or her supervisor, and then what, what is the process if, if the issue is still not resolved? There's got to be a, there's got to be a way to work through the chain of command and also, uh, be able to talk to the elected official directly, in my opinion.
If we decide not to go with meet and confer.
Well, regardless.
Regardless, yeah, yeah. Uh, but somewhere in, in the discussion and the time that you're predicting it may take, uh, I think your original statement that in, in this setting, employees should feel free to talk to whoever they want to. We always end up, when we hear something, we always end up going back and going to management, talking with you, talking to other experts and to, to get to the bottom of things, and I don't think that should change while we go through this, you know, process of trying to figure out, uh, what needs to be in the.
Well, what we're doing, what we're looking really is, what I, what I've kind of described is an informal process.
Yes, yes.
And that's what you described. What we're talking about is a codified formal process.
Either in the rules and regs.
Or through the adoption of, of the, of the meet and confer. That's what we're talking about. Formalizing an administrative process.
And I'm going to circle back around, I wasn't, just, just to make sure that I'm not getting kind of lost here. Again, I, the fact that we're having these discussions now, and this is probably one of a few that are probably lingering around out there. So, so here's the part that's frustrating to me, and, and I get that we're all being very polite, and we're being very diplomatic, uh, and we're all trying to make sure that nobody escalates or steps on each other's toes when it comes to, um, maybe the perception from, say, some of our workforce, that they're not being heard, the management saying that they are hearing them, uh, because we don't want to pick sides in that, per se. And I don't know if that's necessarily beneficial to the public to hear that discussion without fully hear. But what we're stuck with right now is publicly, we have these discussions taking place. And either we have a council that, uh, we've all heard both sides of this, and either we accept the fact that there is some level of confusion and, and voice it, and, and that's a concern to me. Uh, the other thing is then if there is a level of confusion, i- is what is the answer? And if we're saying publicly that we want them to come to us if they think they need something?
That's part of the answer.
Uh, that's part of the answer. But then if that's always been the case, then I don't see why it would take six months for us to get something put together. I mean, if we're all in consensus right now that we want our workforce to come to us and let us know if there's a requirement that they need filled, then I don't think that that requires too much more of a session, other than the consensus has been given, come back with a couple of options of how to make it work.
Can I, can I just answer that?
I, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to avoid here is exploratory learning on something that I think that we all know is going on.
And I, I understand that, Craig. Um, for me, I'm not ready to make a decision, um, on whether we should, as a city, adopt meet and confer. I think it should be put into, and that's what today's discussion is about, um, and that's what the presentation was about, because I wanted us all, and Christine and I had discussed this and brought it together, wanted to hear, wanted council to all hear the same things, but I'm not personally willing to make a yes or no decision just on information I heard today. I want to kind of think about it, maul it over with other information we have. At the same time, we do have the rules and regulations coming out, and I'm just concerned, for me, my concern is that we don't adopt those without making sure there is a codified formal process for how employees communicate, not just with council, but with their management, with their chain of command, so that we as council, which is the important part here to me, get all the information so that we can make the best decisions possible for our employees. So that's where I'm looking. I don't think that's going to take six months.
No, it's not going to take six months.
I don't think that at all, but I think we're all in agreement that something needs to be done. I just don't think we're in agreement on what it is yet.
And just for clarification, I just used the six months period to say if we know something is, is not working, once it gets established. Uh, Mr. Petucic, what, what's your recommendation?
Well, Mr. Mayor, uh, first, uh, obviously we need to go through the personnel, uh, rules and regulations process. Uh, that process has been ongoing well over a year now. The employee council has been involved in many meetings, there's been a lot of back and forth, uh, on it. Uh, a lot of issues, uh, have been brought up. All the issues that were brought up. All the issues that were brought up by the employee council, there is a fact sheet put together, and we will go through all of them, where points were made, where we were able to find agreement with the employee council, areas where there wasn't agreement between management and the employee council, and why, you know, there wasn't agreement, and what the process or what the item was going forward. And, you know, a lot of it's due to financial considerations and that kind of thing. So I think the, the current rules and regulations have worked for us for a long, long time. They've been amended many, many times, and they're old, so it is time to adopt new rules and regulations. Just to clarify, too, we have very few grievances here. There's hardly any to speak of, so that, you know, we do have all those processes in place, they need to be there in the rules and regulations, but we don't really have that sort of thing. And we need to, we need to take a look at also the, the, you know, code of ordinances and that kind of thing, and, and, you know, who's responsible for, for what. You know, obviously, anybody can talk to anybody in this organization, and, you know, that's always been the way it's been here, and I would see that continuing. You know, obviously, people talk to you guys, you know, get information. Hard because some, some of it is personnel-related, and, you know, it's hard to share all that across the board with everybody, but, you know, those are the types of things that we get, so nobody's trying to, you know, stop anybody from talking to council members about anything if they, they care to do that. But let's go through the process. I imagine it'll take a, a number of work sessions to work through it, because there's a lot in there, and obviously, we're looking for your input and make those changes accordingly.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure how many, how many, I'm not sure that there's a desire on a council to look at the entire document. I know this issue and being able to communicate with the employees is obviously important to us from the discussion today. So maybe there's only key parts that we, we can, well, we need to get an overview, obviously. Know areas that we, we need to have discussion in the, in the next city council, next work session.
You know, it, it's important to understand that that is your policy document.
Exactly.
With regards to how we deal with personnel issues. We are bound by federal state law and your personnel rules and regulations, and that is how we act in that frame, or approved by legislature or, or federal law. So, so they are important from that aspect.
Okay.
I want to be clear with something, Mr. Mayor. And Chuck, I appreciate that anybody can talk to anybody and that there are very few grievances. I think what my issue is for this big picture of, of us talking to each other is the resolution of issues. That's where we don't always have what we need to understand the resolutions that are made. So in this conversation that we're having, and especially through the rules and regulations, I think we'll get a better picture, especially if some things have changed in there. And I also think it's important that everybody listening understand that the process, at least the way I understand it in city government, is the city manager is responsible for the staff, for, for all of the activities or issues that come up with staff, that is always in the hands of the city manager. And there's something in here where I think Rachel's conversation kind of explained that the policies that the city council establishes is what guides what the city manager does with the staff.
That's correct.
So this is really, really important, not that I needed to repeat that, but, but what we're, what, what I'm still trying to sort through is, on the one hand, one possibility is using a meet and confer process, but there's two or three other possibilities that we might come up with that would help with us having a better understanding of what the staff, boots-on-the-ground staff, their input into the process. And that's what I really want to be able to see if, and Chris, I'll use, if Chris says, he's talked among, and forget that you're president and all of that, that you've talked with a lot of folks that are doing the fireman work, and they've kind of said, we need to do this, and you go to the next step and you, you say, you know, we all think we need to do this, and that person then comes to you and says, well, you know, most of my folks feel like we really need to do this. We need to know how you respond to that, and I know budget, and I may be going too deep into this, but budget is really, really important, but if you say, sorry, we can't do that, folks need to know they can come to another resource and say, you know, with all due respect to the city manager, he just doesn't seem to get it, and we have the conversation. We talk with you, you. Now, where does that mess up the, the general process?
Well, Councilmember Calhoun, I think, you know, I'll use the fire department as a good example of last year's budget process. You know, Chief York, you know, as usual, it's a tight budget, and, you know, we have to make, you know, tough, tough decisions with regards to what gets funded and what doesn't. You know, I know there were concerns about the age of the radios they're using and the breathing apparatus, so I, I know that was brought to Chief York. Chief York came to us in our budget session and really made an impassioned, you know, plea to, to get us to, you know, you know, upgrade these radios and the scuba equipment, and the amount of dollars that were available led us to, you know, trying to do a three-year phase in for replacing that equipment. So that's just one example of how those things get done. Based on my discussions with Chief York, you know, those things were brought up to all-hands meetings at the fire department, so they're aware of what made it in the budget and, and what did not, and, you know, that's how the communication is supposed to work with regards to those things. So ultimately, it's up to the council to decide whether you not, you want to change, you know, policies or that kind of thing, but, you know, we were very fortunate to even get those things in the budget this year. So that's just an example of how, how things work. So, you know, we go through the process, you know, I, I try to leave it to the department heads, how they deal with their employees in terms of input for budget items, you know, and those kind of things, but, you know, they, they bring those concerns to us, and then we try to fit them in as best we can, you know, with the amount of resources that are available.
Bob?
I think one of the biggest problems we, we have are, we're going to have three new council people coming on board, and they're going to have to be oriented in, in all this stuff, and it's going to take a while.
Well, that's another.
And that is going to be the biggest.
That's another reason, that's another reason why we need to get this done relatively quickly.
Agreed.
Okay, that's a great, great point, Bob. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to take a moment to thank the professional firefighters of Sierra Vista for the work that they do in the community, and for firefighters, and also for the professional firefighters of Arizona, and for you, sir, who came down here to Sierra Vista to help educate us on meet and confer. I don't want to be redundant, so I will just simply say that I broadly agree with what has been said here today about the issues that clearly need some addressing or clarification, regardless of what happens with meet and confer, and I am happy to know that they will be made in a public setting, because there are pretty serious concerns that were brought to our attention here today, as well as in the past, that need and deserve to be addressed in the public.
Okay, thank you. I think it's probably a good way to end this discussion. Obviously, we'll, we'll talk in three weeks, and, and at that point in time, if there's a desire to make a motion to direct staff to, to, or actually, I shouldn't say make a motion, if there's a desire to make consensus to have staff draft additional information or additional resolutions, we can do that at that time. So I'm going to go on to, if there's no objections, I'm going to go on to a discussion of the council executive report, and I will tell you, we're already past time, so.
Could we, could we hold off on that?
Okay, well, if, if.
I actually have several things to discuss, so we could hold off.
Okay, so Chuck, we're going to postpone that. I'll quickly mention that the only recent trips, meetings, future meetings I had is on, on, when was it, Friday, Sharon?
Yeah.
We had five members of the legislature, the director of ADWR, Arizona Department of Water Resources, his assistant, nature conservancy folks, and they did a tour in the county on the, on a number of the projects. Sharon and I briefed them on, on water, and how this, how the city's played a great role in, in helping with the river, and, and we were well received, it was a good tour, and hopefully, we'll build relationships with the, with the legislators for future develop, for future issues. Go ahead.
I, I also want to just remind everybody that the executive report, the council report is online.
Online.
And it's good to go ahead and read it ahead of time, and you, and you may have some questions that you want more information on, but I do, too, but I think I would prefer if we could wait. But the other thing I, I want to throw in here, too, is, you're probably going to ask for this in a minute, but, you know, on really important issues like this one that we've talked about today, maybe we don't need to wait three weeks to discuss it again. Maybe we could do it again in two weeks.
Well, the question is, is when was the, when was the.
Document going to be ready, yeah.
Be ready in three weeks.
Well, then that's for that, but we still, you know, we don't always have to stick to the.
I understand that, and we have done that in the past as well.
Yes.
Anything else on E, F, and G on the agenda that everybody has to talk about?
Future discussions.
Either one, any of them. Go ahead, Alicia.
Okay. Where to begin? Youth Commission has had trouble having a quorum for most of this year, and one of discussions that I've had with the staff liaison and one of the youth commissioners is that it might be helpful to have a quorum more often and to have more engagement with the youth commission if the council were to come up with some taskings. They have tried in the past to come up with taskings on their own, that has not worked out well. So I don't know if we would have time to have that on the first work session in November?
Only work session in November.
I don't know if we'll have time for that, but it is an issue that.
We can have others if we need them.
Need to be discussed. I, I don't know if there's other commissions that are, feel similar.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that would be a good time. Christine has a really good idea about the youth commission, I think that's worth discussing, and that would be a good time to discuss it.
May I ask that, when, when we have these kinds of ideas, if we were to put them out to, and Jill, you may have a comment, is Jill over there? Yeah. If we would put them out so that everybody has an opportunity, the council has an opportunity to see it ahead of time?
And, and you can do that by saying, this is my idea, please do not respond.
Yeah.
That way, we don't get into problems with open meeting law.
I think that would be really helpful for the discussion, if we knew stuff ahead of time. And I've tried to send things ahead of time, too, so that we know, so everybody's informed now that that's what we'll do. Yes?
Okay, E, F, and G, anything else?
Just on future discussion.
Okay.
Chuck, I asked you about this before, but do we have it on the schedule yet to discuss social, use of social media by us and open meeting laws, just based on some articles I've been reading?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Gray, we have on the November 8th agenda to discuss an update to the council handbook regarding the social media policy.
Okay, and we'll have some legal opinions at that time on that? Okay, thank you.
Good.
Kind of ditto with the commissions, had arts and humanities this week, as well as cultural diversity this week, and I think it's still kind of stemming from this idea of, you know, when we passed the, the empowerment, the commission empowerment plan, it was supposed to be kind of a push-pull of information, you know, sending a tasker down, saying, hey, this is what we need. And that, that's kind of what I've been trying to stress with, at least the commissions that I'm a, fortunate enough to be a member of, is that we have to be very clear, or they have to also be very clear about what they want to do, and then we'll figure out the hows. And I think right now, there's still a lot of confusion about that, and I'm not sure what we have to do to cultivate a change in that kind of perception. It's almost like we're just kind of ticking through the same things that they do every year. I know with arts and humanities, we're trying to get them over towards the black box theater as a what, you know, what do we have to do to make this happen? And then with cultural diversity, again, it was very similar, is what does that mean, and what are we trying to actually accomplish? That being said, I, I think that, I know we have the, the fiscal change, the, the change of fiscal policy that we, we passed will predicate another semi mini-budget discussion in the next month or two, based on the, the fund balance. I, I, I still highly recommend and encourage that maybe we get some, some staff people up through some PMP training or something like that, so they can better kind of take these commission ideas and turn them into little mini projects that we can actually put some, some plans around or some processes around, or how we're going to do it around it, but, you know, we'll, we'll have to see how that goes. But, kind of universal with those.
Yes, ma'am.
And I will be super-duper quick. The Tourism Commission, they just met, and they are really going to start focusing on their idea, I'm trying to think what exactly they're called, and I should know, but basically, event concierge, in which they are going to actually pick a few of the bigger events that the city does, and to be on-site to hand out more information to tourists who come out, so that we can hopefully grab a little bit more money, keep that here in the city.
Like ambassadors?
Yes, I think that's probably a better term, ambassadors, yeah.
Concierge.
Concierge.
Anything else? I'll thank, thank you for your participation. Want to thank the firefighters for coming down and presenting today. Meetings adjourned.